Good afternoon and welcome to our Glendale City Council workshop. This meeting is for council members to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future council meeting agenda items. It's a work-study session only and allows the council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this workshop, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
All right, good afternoon. Welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session, January 28, 2025. This meeting in order, the Office of the Budget and Finance has asked that we change the order of the agenda. We'll be doing item number five before item number four, so it'll be one, two, three, five, four, six. So with that said, Mr. Melner, are you on the phone, sir?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, we'll just need you to turn that volume up a little bit. Okay, and with that, all the other members are attending, so I'm not going to be calling roll call. Everybody is present. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item number one, please?
Downtown campus reinvestment project update.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Here today, we have a fairly packed agenda for you today. We're pleased to bring you now update number 29 on our DCRP project, and I've asked Don Bessler to fill in for Eddie Garcia, who has been providing these. So, Don, if you'll walk me through the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, Mayor, council members. As the city manager indicated, this is the 29th monthly update we've done, so we've been moving right along and trying to make sure that the public and everybody that views your meetings has an opportunity to stay abreast of what's going on. I'm accompanied today by Sue Billing. She is a contract architect that we brought on to help Eddie, and she's working on a number of projects for us, and she has more technical knowledge, but I think I can get us through this. We'll go to this slide here. Site activities, the big thing, as you can tell by having parked nearby and been downtown, there's a whole bunch of activity happening on the campus now. I mean, it is really full. We have about 85 full-time workers that are onsite in various trades that are doing all of the work on our behalf. You're seeing work now, not only on the site, but you're seeing work on the exterior of the buildings and the interior of the buildings, and so we've got everything in motion, really working very well. The masonry is delivered, and you're going to start seeing the actual brickwork going up in February, and so it'll start, the building will continue to start to take form. The exterior sheeting, this is a structural element. You've noticed it on the east side of the building, but within the next few weeks, it will be completely enclosed, and I'll go through a little bit more on that later, but you'll really start to see again the form of the building, really starting to take shape. Exterior wall framing, you're starting to see that, as well as some interior framing, if you've taken a look. I want to take the time on this slide to slow down just a little bit and point out something that's really important, and there are several more slides similarly. If you recall, probably around update number 14 or so, 15, it's been at least nine, 10 months ago, we showed you some pictures of some failed building systems that we uncovered and discovered during the course of the construction and the remodel. And I'm going to show you examples of that, and again, as you go through these pictures, you're going to understand that the building really was aging out as far as its infrastructure systems, and a major renovation of the building was really in order, even though it wasn't always apparent to us, because a lot of these things were hidden by layers and layers of sheeting. So what you're seeing in this slide is more steel. Turns out, when the building was built nearly 50 years ago, it wasn't built plumb and square, which is odd for a large industrial building like this. And so we've spent a significant amount of time and a little bit of money putting more steel on it in order to square up the building. The building needs to be squared up in order to make sure that it lasts another 50 years, and as we go forward with things that will happen from ongoing maintenance operations in the next 50 years, it'll be done right, it'll be done easy. So we've added, what you're seeing here is more steel to square up the building. It's added some time to the schedule, and I'll talk about that in the last slide. Exterior wall framing, you can see all of these window openings. This slide and the next slide really will demonstrate that at all of the occupied levels that we have in the building, from the garden level to the fourth floor, we've spent an enormous amount of time with our architects trying to bring natural light into the building spaces. And so you'll get a feel for that on this slide and the next slide. This is the exterior, but in the interior, much more natural light, and to the extent possible, and pretty much predominantly on the floors, we've put these windows in the shared spaces as opposed to behind locked doors and private offices. So the employees and the workers that will be occupying the building will have really good natural light as they occupy the space. You're seeing the mechanical shafts and cores. We're moving right along with the building systems. You'll hear the term MEP. It stands for Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing. It's a common industry and trade term. We're right in the middle of going full bore with mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. It's a very tedious and expensive operation, and we're in the middle of this. These are the vertical shafts that are coming up. I believe this picture is showing the shaft, but we're right now between floors two to Similarly, building systems are coming on up and on. Fire sprinklers are complete now on level four and level three. You're starting to see in this picture horizontal HVAC distribution. That's critical because it needs to be placed properly. You don't just put it anywhere. It has to go somewhere specific so that we can make sure that we can predominantly cool and heat when necessary the building comfortably and efficiently. Interior framing, again, you'll see all the metal studs. This picture is probably a week old, but if you go out there today, you'll again see there's a lot of interior stud work that's already going up. This cross beam is a structural beam. It's on all the floors. It's part of the original design of the building, the thing that looks like an X. It's something that couldn't be moved, and it plays into the floor plate for the building The main electrical slab, this seems a little obvious, but what, again, what's important about this is this is an example of working with our contractor, Oakland Construction, and having them think outside the box. What would often happen with a large building like this is that when you take the power out of it, and it's been out for many, many months, you come back with generators and you generate electricity whenever you need it. What you see on the left there, that is gray, that's a temporary SES panel that has been put in to provide temporary service, electrical service. That's important because we're able to much more efficiently and cheaply energize the building when we need to energize the building. It's also much safer for worker safety. So again, just another example of working with great partners to really efficiently spend the taxpayers' money, but also safely look out for the people that are on that site. Rooftop on the left side, that's the curbing that will receive the electrical units that are going to be placed on the roof. I'll show you that in the next slide as well, but I will say this, that again, if the council will remember, it's been a while now, close to a year, you approved Guaranteed Maximum Price Number Two with Oakland so we could buy the long lead items. And so the mechanical equipment we purchased with your approval nearly a year ago, it's all been delivered to the site, and it's ready to go, and we're not waiting. From a supply chain management point of view, since the pandemic, we are seeing, everybody is seeing a slowdown in certain commodities, but absolutely in electrical and mechanical gear. We've had to wait over a year at different times for different pieces of equipment, and the fact that you guys, the council, I shouldn't say you guys, the council agreed to move forward smartly in that fashion has really helped us maintain the schedule on this project, and that's where we'll be making up some of the time that otherwise would have been lost. So it's been great work for everybody to do that. This is the screen wall that'll surround that so that the neighbors will have screen for noise and aesthetics, so you won't hear the rooftop units running and won't see the rooftop units. They'll be aesthetically screened. That's what's going on up here. Also, the roof, just to go back, that will be all dried in in March, so that's a big deal. Again, as we start working on the interiors of the building, we'll have the sheeting on the outside, and the roof will be dried in to protect against any moisture that may, we hope we experience, actually. Next picture is the council chambers. This is another slide that I'm going to slow down a little bit on and point out the unknown and discovered items that happened during construction. This is the council chambers. If you look to the left, you'll see drywall. Let me start with, on the floor there, you'll see the slabs of wood that we salvaged and will reuse back into the council chambers later. On the left side, on the sheet rock wall there, you can, you might not be able to tell what it is, but there's holes in the bottom of the wall, and that's not from somebody kicking it, that's from moisture that has gotten in over the years and was undiscovered and undetected, and it's just deteriorated, the wall, it deteriorated all of the aesthetic, or, I'm sorry, the acoustic fabrics that you used to have in the council chambers that were to provide acoustical help in the area, and they just weren't. And so those are things that we've discovered as we've gone through there and had to fix. Likewise, you can't see it very well on this slide because the room's light, but there's that rounded wall that leads up to the dais and up to the council chairs, and that had similar damage underneath it, and we'll be peeling that back and making sure that that all looks really good when we go back in, instead of the possibility of having, covering up something that's been damaged over many years and really unnoticed. The amphitheater is really getting ready to go to town here. This is the garden level, right in the middle. This is another example of where we've discovered something. It wasn't a hidden defect, but it was definitely something that was an issue. For those of you that have been involved with city politics or on the council for the 10 years or longer, you'll recall, a dozen years ago or so, the city hall suffered a major flooding event in the sub-basement, and the reason it did is because we had basically a large sump pump, the way the building was originally designed, that water would run into this sump pump from the outside, and then it would be pumped out of the building sub-basement, not the garden level, but the sub-basement, and it would go back into the park. Well, there was such a strong rain event at that time that the pump couldn't keep up with it, and so it was just recirculating, circulating the water back to itself, and that's what caused the flood. What you're seeing here is we've abandoned that design intent, and we come up with a wet well. This big square hole will receive the wet well. It will then go into a force main, and it will go into a proper storm sewer line that we installed in Glen Drive six months ago. If you recall, Glen Drive was under construction for about 45 days, and that's what we were doing, was putting that in. So this again is an example of, let's do it right, it's a time to do it right, and get it done properly, and it's going to make the building last its intended useful life, which is the goal the council's always adopted for our assets. So very excited about that. Next two pictures are more of the same. That's the actual wet well, the, I'm sorry, the lift station on the right, that's the lift station. But again, this is a holistic solution to dealing with stormwater as opposed to just kind of pushing it around. From milestones, as I wrap up here, council's used to seeing from your engineering department, this red, yellow, green stoplight that we have. We use that as a way to quickly signal to the council, to the city manager, what's going on with the scope, the schedule, and the budget. From a project management standpoint, those are the three things that we're always worried about in engineering, that we don't get scope creep, that we stick to the schedule, and that we stick to the budget. So you have green, green, yellow, and I'm going to talk about what yellow means. Yellow doesn't mean that we have a problem. What yellow means is that we put highlighted focus on that issue to make sure that we don't lose that issue, and it doesn't turn red. So as I mentioned, with the steel issue, it was predominantly the steel on the plum of the building. That cost us some time. We well, we may well make that time up. We're still a year out from opening, and it's too early to say that it's affected the schedule, but we want you to know that we've got eyes on schedule because of that specific issue. And so if it becomes something that we can actually put a number to, we will. It may be at this point in the realm of 30 to 60 days, and it may end up being none of those days. Again, we've got a lot of, a lot of construction in front of us, and we're, so we're very confident we can do that. I will say this, this is something we talk about with the city managers all the time, is where are we at with our risk profile? You'll recall when we gave you a presentation back in June when we were trying to tidy up the budget, we laid out what our risk profile was for construction activities. So we're about 85 to 90% past the highest amount of risk that we will experience on this site. Again, usually happens coming out of the ground or peeling back walls or seeing something like we've seen with the steel, and so we're, pretty much that's behind us. Long lead items, again, procured, Glendale Drive. Next month, you'll start seeing actual masonry go up. We'll be drilling caissons for the amphitheaters, start getting the amphitheater infrastructure going. Again, I'm just sort of repeating what I said, but we're very excited about where we are with the project, and it's moving along very smartly. And with that, we'll just finish with, this is an image for the viewers. This is what the campus is going to look like when we're done. It's very impressive, and it's something to be proud of, for sure. With that, we can answer any questions.
Projected completion date?
We're still looking at the first quarter, calendar quarter of '26, so it could be the end of that. When I say that, March-ish, that's still where we are today. The schedule's still intact to what we've presented to you previously. If that changes, we'll call it out, but we're not ready to do that.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, hold on, Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the update on slide number 13, when you were showing the water damage on the drywall. Was it, was it from, the roof had a leak, water pipes in the general area? Have we discovered what it was and how we can avoid that later?
Mayor, council member Baldinaga, I don't have the exact answer to that. Sue might be able to answer that, but my guess would be the roof.
That information has not been investigated in its totality yet, but we'll let you know when we do know the answer, and of course remedies would be made.
And I'm assuming just the age of the building, if it was a roof leak, it would have been worse, 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 worse.
Yeah, and as you can tell, the roof is being re-roofed.
All right, Mr. Melner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I saw a news report earlier this week that confused me a little bit regarding the library. My understanding, Mr. Bessler, is that the library and the Velma Teague that we had initially agreed to do has now been, not just put on hold, but it's been stopped. Is that correct?
Mayor, council member Malinar, at your meeting in January, you directed the city manager to remove the scope of work and associated fees with work for the library as well as the promenade, and staff is doing that. You will see a memo from myself next month that will come back with the modified contract that shows you that we've removed that scope of work. So it would be accurate to say it's been removed from the project. It hasn't been paused.
Okay, because the news report kind of indicated that it was just paused and the council was possibly going to still do it. My understanding, council policy or council decision at this point in time is, is until the community engages and we have our meetings and we discuss that further, that the library improvements or whatever we're going to do to the library is completely canceled at this point in time until we come back together and decide as a community what we're going to do. Is that correct?
Mayor, council member Malinar, so what we've given directions to the, the design team is to immediately begin their work on designing the rest of Murphy Park with the understanding that the footprint of Velma Teague Library will be the same. So they still want to look at how the access in and out of the library, how we look at benches, and there's, there's some elk coves there that, on the outside, that are not conducive for protecting, preventing, say, overnight camping and those things. So the design work is commencing to complete the rest of the park, which is part of the DCRP, but it's with the understanding that the, the footprint of the library, that they'll be building around the existing footprint, and that will not change.
Mayor.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, because the news report was very confusing. It makes it sound like the council hadn't really done a final decision, so I wanted to make sure that the public understood that that decision has been made, the, the library is not going to be changed under this construction project, and that we will be going forward with that at a later date once we get the community involved and all that.
Thank you, Mayor. Council member Malinar, just in case you missed it, I do have a council item of special interest to bring back that, the library question to a workshop so that we can perhaps pick up where we left off, and if council would like to consider again the, any opportunities that might present itself for the library, and, or to decide that we want to do some more looking and investigating about how to use other buildings in our downtown that, you know, to bring into our downtown the things we want. So it will at some point, I don't know at what point, but it will be coming back to us as an item of interest.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number two.
Mayor, I have a question. I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Bessler, back to what council member Baldinaga had asked you about the water damage on these walls. Could you clarify, did you say that it hadn't been investigated yet as to what cost it?
Mayor, council member Guzman, I think what Sue was trying to say is we haven't dug into what's going on there, but we will, and absolutely will make sure that we don't put something back up that we don't know. We have a tight roof, and any pipe work that's in there, mechanical, electric, or plumbing is solid, so it'll, it'll be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Item two.
Amendment to Glendale City Code, Chapter 26, offenses miscellaneous, Section 26-70.3, use of fireworks.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is Deputy City, Deputy City Manager Rick St. John.
Is it on now? Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, the state regulates what cities can and can't do as far as the use of permissible and the sale of permissible fireworks within our jurisdiction. State law under 361606 does give cities the right to create an ordinance. We've done that over the last several years. State legislators have changed the state law, 1606, in a couple of ways, and we've not kept up with those changes. So what I'm seeking today is consensus from the council to amend our ordinance to be in compliance with state law. So kind of the long story short, our current ordinance says that permissible fireworks can be sold in accordance with state law, so we don't need to make any changes to the dates of the sale of permissible fireworks. We get more descriptive in our code when it comes to the use of permissible fireworks, and it currently says that you can use them between June 24th and July 6th, and then between December 24th and January 3rd. In 2019, Senate Bill 1348 added Cinco de Mayo, so May 4th to May 6th, and it added the second and third days of Diwali, which is a Hindu holiday that typically occurs in late October. It's a five-day celebration, and on the second and third days of that celebration, permissible fireworks are allowed to be used. In 2023, Senate Bill 1188 changed the dates when they can be used around New Year's. So again, it was the 24th through January 3rd, it is now the 26th through January 4th. So to be in compliance with state law, we need to add May 4th to May 6th, the second and third days of Diwali, and then we need to change from December 24th to January 3rd to December 26th to January 4th. That will bring us into compliance with state law, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, Mayor. I'm just curious as to why it's taken so long to change the ordinance since, in 2019, Senate Bill 1348 had changed it.
Mayor, council member Guzman, we just missed it. So with all the bills that are signed year after year, we just missed the fact that the, the dates were changed by the legislators in those two years. It was brought forward by a constituent this past Christmas season or holiday season, so I began to dig into it and discovered that we had missed a couple of changes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. St. John, so the change from December 24th to January 3rd, that's what we currently have, and now it's going to December 26th to January 4th. So it takes off two days at the front, adds a day at the back. What happens to Christmas itself? Is that handled elsewhere, or is Christmas not a fireworks holiday?
Mayor, council member Turner, they're not permissible on Christmas Day.
Thank you. And so we're catching up with state law that adds two, three, four, looks like four more days of fireworks over the last few years that the state's added to our fireworks problem.
Council member Turner, it adds five days, the 4th, 5th, 6th of May, and then the two days of Diwali, but then it removes a day, so that the net is four.
Net is four, to what at this point has become the number one complaint that I get from constituents, averaged out over the course of the year. Problem's not getting better, it's getting worse, I think. The other question I have here is, in one part of our code, we reference state law, in accordance with state law, but in this part of the code, we're actually replicating state law. Is there a reason we're doing it differently, or would we just save ourselves from trouble if we made both of them in accordance with state law?
Mayor, council member Turner, I think the, more people are looking at our code as it pertains to the use of permissible fireworks. So I think the industry is looking at state law, they're not looking at our code for when they're allowed to sell. So I believe the decision, and we implemented this code originally 10, 12 years ago, I think the thought process back then was, let's tell our community exactly when they can use the fireworks. Let's be very clear about that. I think if we went to now, if we went to in accordance with state law for everything, we would be able to do that, but I still think spelling it out for our community is the better option.
So if I understand, when we have residents to go to the, to the city website and the city code to see what the dates are, if we do it by reference, now they've got to figure out how to go to Arizona Revised Statutes, find it there and do that, so it's maybe a better, it's easier for our residents to delineate it in our code, even though it may mean that we have to change our code on an annual basis.
Mayor, council member Turner, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. St. John, so are the allowable hours the same regardless of the holiday, or are they different for different holidays?
Mayor, council, Vice Mayor Tomalchaff, the hours differ on the morning of July 5th, so what it actually says in the state law is July 4th to July 5th. You're allowed to use permissible fireworks until 1:00 a.m. Any other day, it's 12:30, and the same is true of December 31st to January 1st, and that is correctly written in our code as is, so we don't need to modify that. And that, it also exists in our noise ordinance in Chapter 25, I think.
Okay, thank you. So, so that would apply to the addition of Cinco de Mayo and Diwali, those would be 12, unless it's, unless it's otherwise, stated otherwise, it's 12:30.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, correct.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
Mayor, council, first, I would like to say that the firework lobby is pretty powerful because as a Mexican-American, I don't think that I would ever ask for a special holiday or, or a or or accommodation for fireworks on Cinco de Mayo, especially because in my culture, it really isn't a Mexican holiday whatsoever. It's just a good, a good day for people to have margaritas. And so I also think that the Cactus District, especially after a town hall, is completely against any fireworks whatsoever. We can, and I think the entire city could could also say the same thing with countless stories from residents. I would love to find a solution that ends the harm caused by fireworks. We have an opportunity to come together and rethink how we celebrate our holidays. We have also seen what has happened in the city of LA with the fires. And so I appreciate the city attorney and Mr. Rick St. John for sitting down with me before this meeting to talk about other ways that we can tackle this issue. Thank you.
All right. No other discussion. We have a consensus for them to basically parallel state law.
Are we supposed to say it out loud, or does that change? Yes? I don't know.
Say what out loud?
Well, last time we were told not to shake heads. So I just wanted to verify with Mr. Bailey, what is our appropriate response?
But Mayor and council, just a point of order, that to the extent that there's a verbal response, we can record that. Generally, it's difficult to sometimes figure out what a shaking of the head means.
Thank you. Yes.
I would ask the attorney, if we all respond verbally, isn't that sort of like taking a vote?
Mayor and council, no, all you're doing is you're moving it to the other meeting. So to the extent you want to move it to the next meeting, you, that's what you're asking to do. Whether or not you vote in affirmative or negative at the later meeting, you still have the free will to do that.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
No.
Okay, item number three.
Development impact fee update.
Mayor members of the council here to provide staff report on item number three, led by Don Bessler, Director of Engineering, and John Murphy, who's our CIP administrator. They'll be joined, I believe, by representatives from Tishler Bice.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. With me here today is Ben Griffin. Ben Griffin represents Tishler Bice. Tishler Bice is representing the city in their impact fee adoption process and formulation probably for the last 20-plus years. What Ben's going to do today, he's going to go over basically some development impact fee basics, some land use assumptions, the infrastructure improvement plan schedule, and the process coming up, proposed summary fee, and basically comparison of where the city stands with our impact fees against our neighbors.
Mayor, council members, it's good to be back in Glendale. I've worked in the last few updates. So I know some of you were council members in previous updates. You have some new council members. So, you know, I want to start off with just, you know, a sort of a development fee 101. Those of you who don't deal with impact fees every day, it's a nice refresher for you. And then those of you who are new, just bring you up to speed. So development fees are one-time payments for growth-related infrastructure, generally collected at the time of the building permit. They can't fund operations, maintenance, repair, replacement, rehab. You know, we're looking for new capital that provides capacity. It's not a tax, but it does, you know, link the city to provide some sort of, you know, benefit to that fee payer once they pay you that fee. Within an impact fee study, you have to prove three things. The first is need. Generally, that's, you know, you're continuing to grow and that there are capital costs related to, you know, that growth. Next, we have to prove benefit. So part of that benefit is that, you know, you as a city construct those improvements within a timely manner. So for these nonutility fees, it's 10 years from the date of collection. We also want to make sure that there's a geographic benefit. So all the fees that we're updating today, so fire, parks, police, and library, they have a single citywide service area. And then finally, we want to make sure that the fees are proportionate to demand. So, you know, it's really easy on the residential side because we can use census data and say, all right, on average, you know, a single-family unit has this many people per unit. A multifamily unit has this many people per unit. So we can vary the fees proportionately based on the number of, you know, average occupancy in that unit. We also have to make sure that, you know, we're not charging future development for a higher level of service than existing development receives unless you have identified some sort of outside funding mechanism to raise that level of service, making it where you're, you know, charging the same level of service to everyone. So again, just making sure that we're not overcharging future development. There are three general fee methodologies, and they look at points in time. So the cost recovery looks to the past. So if you have excess capacity, you can, you know, have future development buy into that excess capacity. The incremental approach looks to the present, so it maintains the existing level of service and uses, you know, existing costs. So, you know, what does it cost to build a pickleball court? What does it cost to acquire a patrol vehicle? And then plan-based looks to the future where you say, hey, you know, this is where we are today. This is where we want to be. You know, do we have refined costs? You know, does it increase the level of service? If so, how do we isolate existing development share compared to future development share? And then we also need to evaluate credits. So the site-specific credit, that's handled after the implementation of the fee. So if, you know, if a developer constructs, you know, a pickleball court for you, then they would receive a credit against their impact fee because that's something that's included in the impact fee study. Debt service or, you know, dedicated revenue credits, essentially what we're doing here is making sure that we're not charging once through the impact fee and then a second time through some sort of future revenue source. So we want to make sure that, you know, any of those future revenues that would be used for the same improvements, we go ahead and include a credit in the impact fee study, so we're not overcharging. All right, and then specific to Arizona, we have to adopt three separate documents. So the land use assumptions, that's essentially the development projections. The infrastructure improvements plan, that looks at your your costs, your levels of service, your your inventories. Those two are adopted first, and then after you've adopted the LUA and IIP, then you start the adoption process for the development fees. You'll see the development fees today. So it's, you know, not a surprise. Once we get to that adoption, you know, we show you all three components together. That way, you know, it just makes for a much smoother adoption process. There are limitations on necessary public services, and necessary public services are essentially, you know, what's defined by the act that we can include in the impact fee study. So libraries are limited to 10,000 square feet. Parks are limited to 30 acres unless they provide a direct benefit. Can't do regional training facilities for police and fire. And then, you know, they must have a useful life of three or more years. So for necessary public services, in 2022, you updated your street fees. In 2024, you updated water and wastewater. So today, we're discussing fire, library, parks, and police. All right. And so we started this process back in March of 2024, advertised the land use assumptions and IIP back in December. So today, we're having a work session in February. You'll have a public hearing, and within, you know, 30 to 60 days of that public hearing, you can adopt the fees. The planned adoption date is at the end of March for the land use assumptions and IIP. Then this sort of starts over for development fees, where you have a public hearing in May, adopt in June, and then the fees go into effect 75 days after that on September 8th. All right. So the first component, the land use assumptions, this shows over the next 10 years, you know, what we think growth will look like. We default to MAG data, and, you know, based on discussions with staff, we did adjust the single-family projections. We adjusted that downward slightly from what MAG was showing, just based on, you know, what's in the development pipeline, what is, you know, basically how much land you have available. Because, you know, you do have limited parcels for, you know, larger-scale single-family development. And so what we're saying here is, you know, over the next 10 years, if you grow by about 7,400 housing units, that translates into a population increase of about 17,500 people. Based on MAG's employment projections, you know, they expect, you know, about 24,000 additional jobs over the next 10 years. And so when we convert that to nonresidential floor area, that's just shy of about 15 million square feet over the next 10 years. So are there any questions, comments, concerns with the land use assumptions?
Mayor, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Which category would hospitality jobs fall under?
Mayor, Councilmember, generally, that would fall under the commercial category.
Okay. All right. That number seems small, especially with the, you know, by resort and coming on.
We can definitely take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we'll move on to the infrastructure improvements plan. We'll start with fire. So we'll have a citywide service area, just like the current fees. We're looking at two components. So a facilities component and an apparatus component. We're using an incremental methodology, so we maintain the existing level of service. And so based on 10 years of projected growth, if you maintain your level of service, you need about 12,000 square feet of fire facilities. That would be about $6.9 million. And then you would generate about, you know, $3.2 million in revenue to acquire additional fire apparatus. And this shows, you know, just that the current and proposed fees. So for a single-family unit, your current fee is $655. The proposed fee is just over $900. You know, even if you had the exact same level of service as you did in your your prior update, we know that construction costs and apparatus costs have increased since then. So, you know, even with the same level of service, your your proposed fees would need to be higher to account for increased construction and apparatus costs. So any questions or comments for fire? All right. Next up, we have library. So a citywide service area, using the incremental methodology, you would need to add about 2,900 square feet of library facilities over the next 10 years to maintain the existing level of service. And that has a cost of about $2.5 million. And so you can see, your current single-family fee is almost $200, and the proposed fee is 355. Again, even if you had the exact same level of service as you did in the previous study, we know that construction costs have increased since then. So really, you're just seeing the reflection of those higher construction costs with these proposed fees. All right. For parks and rec, citywide service area, we're looking at one component. So this is just the park amenities. So, you know, the the park fee does not have a land acquisition component because there are, you know, limited sites available for acquisition. So we've really focused on, you know, the improvements to parks as our component. So really, if, you know, you have, you know, an area of the city that says, hey, we, you know, we really want some pickleball courts, well, it provides you that flexibility to add some pickleball courts to parks in that area. If you have someone saying, hey, look, we we would really like some additional lighting at the fields in our area. Again, it provides you that flexibility where you could, you know, add that that lighting and really respond to what growth actually needs throughout the city. And so based on 10 years of projected growth, that would generate about eight and a half million dollars in fee revenue to add additional park amenities. And so the proposed single-family fee is increasing from just over $900 to almost $1,200. All right. For police, citywide service area, looking at three components. So all would use the incremental methodology to maintain the existing level of service. For police facilities, you'd need about 4,000 square feet with a cost of about $4.2 million. You generate about $1.6 million in revenue for additional vehicles and about $1.8 million for additional equipment. And this one, your current fee for a single-family unit is $719. The proposed fee is 702. So a slight decrease there. But you can see for the police fees, really, we're, you know, pretty much in line with where you were in your your previous update. All right. And so this just shows at the top the proposed fees that we're updating today. So for a single-family unit, you know, fire, library, parks, police, would be just shy of $3,200. It's about $2,500 for those components of your current fee. So we're looking at a, an increase of almost $700 for a single-family unit. And this just shows, you know, how you compare to other cities in the valley. And then this final one for a single-family unit, if we're just looking at the nonutility component, because so many of the cities, the utility component is, you know, much higher, this just shows a comparison of, you know, where you are today, where you're going, and then, you know, most of the fees to the right of you, or most of the fees that are less than you, are, you know, Phoenix and Buckeye's current fees, which they should be adopting within the next, you know, few months. And so for the most part, they'll jump ahead of you. And then you have Surprise and Goodyear, and they include a credit for their excess construction sales tax. So without that credit, they would be in line with your proposed fees. And that is the final slide. Some available for any questions or comments.
Mayor, thank you. I'm looking at this chart on, I don't know, page, slide 19. I'm just trying to understand, do other cities have different quadrants, I guess, or or areas where they charge different fees for different areas? And have we ever had any discussion about doing that?
Mayor, council member. So some cities will split it up. Buckeye is a great example of this, where, you know, they have some master-planned communities way north of I-10, so it makes sense to have separate service areas. Glendale does have an east versus west service area for the street fees. And then you you do not charge water or wastewater fees west of 115th?
We can't provide water west of 115th. Okay, that's interesting. Thank you.
Question?
Mayor, and this may not be a question for you, but can someone please clarify for me, what is the difference between a tax and a fee? Thank you.
I can take a stab at that, Mayor Councilmember. So generally, you know, a tax can be used for a broader, you know, amount of, you know, services, whereas a fee generally, it's calculated specifically for a use, and it has to be used specifically, you know, for the the costs associated with that.
Thank you.
Item number four.
Update to City Council on the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Mayor, members of the council, here to lead off the presentation will be Assistant City Manager Vicky Rios, and she'll be joined by some others that she'll introduce.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Wanted to talk with you just and briefly introduce this item. This is the first time we've tried doing this. We're going to give you a recap of how we ended up with certain types of fiscal markers at the end of June of 2024. So this information is a little bit older, but it does come from our audited financial statements through the end of the last fiscal year. And with that, I'm going to introduce our two presenters. We have Megan Elgin, who's been with the city for quite a few years now, and who you have seen before. She's the city's controller, and she's going to be talking and presenting a portion of this presentation. And in addition to that, we have another new Megan. Her name is Megan Smith. She's only been with the city probably about a month, and she's a finance manager in the finance department, specializing actually in financial statements and that type of thing. So together, they're going to present this information. And again, it's the first time that we've really tried to give council a recap of our, how we ended the prior fiscal year. We're hoping that over time, when we do this year after year and present this information in this manner, you'll get more used to it. But there are a lot of term But there are a lot of terms that we're going to be using, that they're going to be talking about the definitions of those. It's a very technical type of topic because we're using government accounting and government accounting terms. And so hopefully, you know, we try to make it as understandable as we can, at the same time, understanding that government accounting can be quite complicated. So with that, I'll turn it over to Megan and Megan.
Before you take off, I did say item number four. This is item number five.
That, that's correct. We flipped them out.
Okay, go ahead.
This is item five, correct, thank you.
Great, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This is Vicky Sen. I am Megan Smith, the new finance manager here at the city.
Megan, Megan, will you pull your microphone a little closer?
Yeah.
There you go.
Today, Megan Elgin and I will give you a brief overview of financial reporting. We're going to discuss the highlights from the audited financial report for fiscal year 2024, and then we'll talk a little bit about the city's fiscal health. Understanding the information in the city's financial reports is important when reviewing financial performance and evaluating future financial decisions. There's key financial information contained within those reports that can help decision-makers understand a government's financial structure, strategy, and performance. So as Vicky said, governmental accounting reporting uses a lot of technical terms. So we just want to take a few minutes to give you a brief overview of governmental accounting and the different reports the city produces. And then you'll hear some of those terms that you'll hear throughout the presentation. So the city issues financial reports that are included within a large report called an Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or the ACFR. This report includes specific financial information presented in accordance with U.S. Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, or GAAP. So GAAP are the Standards of Accounting and Financial Reporting that is established by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And it's the standards that all governments in the U.S. follow. The ACFR includes the balance sheet, or in the financial reports, it's a statement of net position and fund balance, or fund balance. It includes an income statement, which the reports the revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. And then there's robust notes that provide additional detail to all of those amounts that are reported. In addition, all non-federal entities that spend more than $750,000 a year in federal monies must obtain an annual audit in accordance with the Single Audit Act amendments of 1996. So this reporting package includes the ACFR and a schedule of federal programs expenditures, or the CIFA. And then it also includes the independent auditor's internal control and compliance reports over financial reporting and federal programs. The city's financial reports are audited by Clifton Larson Allen, an independent CPA firm. The goal of the independent audit is to provide reasonable assurance the financial statements are free of misstatement, material misstatements. The independent auditors also perform the city's single audit and they review the city's federal grant program following standards that require them to not only report on the fair presentation of the financial statements, but also the internal controls and compliance with legal requirements over those federal awards. So the single audit reporting package is issued separately from the ACFR and that report's typically due by March 31st. And then finally, the city prepares an annual expenditure limitation report to report our compliance with the state-imposed expenditure limitation. This report must be submitted to the state by March 31st, and I'll discuss that report in a little more detail later in the presentation. So governments record financial information for each operation or activity separately in their accounting records, and we call those separate accounting records funds. So governmental funds include activities that are primarily supported by taxes and federal grant monies, federal or state grant monies. The general fund is the city's primary operating fund. The special revenue funds are used to account for restricted or committed revenue sources, those monies from the federal grants or items like highway taxes. Capital projects may be used to account for resources that are restricted or committed to purchasing or constructing capital assets, such as the buildings, roads, and equipment. The debt service funds account for the resources that are accumulated to pay for those long-term debts. And then permanent funds are legally restricted where only the earnings, not the principal in the fund, can be used to support any activities of the city's programs. So the city's only permanent fund is our cemetery fund. The proprietary funds are self-supported by user fees and charges for services. These activities are considered the city's business-type activities. The enterprise funds are programs that provide goods and services to citizens, like water and sewer. The internal service funds include the programs that provide goods or services internally within the city, you know, technology or fleet. Depending on which financial statement you're looking at, you will see either the term net position or fund balance used to describe the least resources left after paying all the liabilities. We use net position when talking about the city as a whole, both the governmental and proprietary funds, or when we're just talking about proprietary funds. These statements focus on economic resources measurement focus and they don't represent the true cash value of the city as the balance is affected by associated assets and liabilities, such as our capital assets and our debt. We use the term fund balance when talking about governmental funds only. So net position is shown in three categories on the statements. We have net investment in capital assets, which is typically the largest portion of the city's net position. Reflects our investment in all our capital assets, such as the land building, equipment, and infrastructure, plus any related debt used to acquire those assets. We use all those capital assets to provide services to the citizens, so those assets are not available for future spending. And the city also must use other resources to pay that debt related to those assets, since those assets themselves cannot be used to liquidate those liabilities. Restricted net position are the financial resources that must be used for purposes that are specified by external entities, such as the federal government. And then what's left is the unrestricted net position, those resources available for general use. When we talk about fund balance in our governmental funds, the value comes closer to representing a governmental entity's true residual value because it focuses on the currently available resources. The fund balance on the governmental funds is reported in the five categories. Non-spendable resources can't be spent. Those are things like your inventory of office supplies. Restricted fund balance must be used for purposes, again, specified by external entities, such as a creditor or a federal government. Committed resources are allocated for certain purposes by the governing body, such as the council. Assigned fund balance are the resources earmarked for certain purposes by management. And then finally, unassigned are those remaining financial resources generally available to be used for any of the government's activities. Typically, you'll look at that unassigned fund balance, what's left. So those are some of the technical terms that you'll hear when we talk about the results of the fiscal year 24 audit. I'll turn it over to Megan Elgin to show you the highlights from that audit.
Thank you, Megan. So some of the highlights from our audited financial report. For the 36th consecutive year, the city's been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our 2023 ACFR by the Government Finance Officers Association. The city was awarded this certificate for publishing an easily readable and efficiently organized ACFR, which satisfies both GAAP and applicable legal requirements. We'd like to extend a thank you to our accounting team who make this possible. Julianne Lloyd, Sharon Broderius, Mark Munson, Juneau Covey, Elizabeth Smith, Sheng Wing, Michael Johnson, Susanna Marquez, Anne Pass, and Mary Bell Moreno. As you can see, the net position for the city as a whole improved during this fiscal year. The amounts shown here include all the funds for the city, both governmental and business-type activities. The amounts here are shown in thousands, so essentially you need to add three zeros to the numbers you see there. And the total net position is approximately $1.6 billion. Our cash and investments increased in fiscal year 24 primarily due to the issuance of $64 million in general obligation bonds and $43 million in excise tax revenue bonds. The city's investment in capital assets, which is net of accumulated depreciation and amortization as of the end of June, was $1.1 million for governmental activities and $679,000 for the business-type activities. These assets mostly include land, building, machinery and equipment, and infrastructure for streets, parks, airport, water and wastewater treatment plants. Since the city owns over $1.8 billion in capital assets, we must be mindful and maintain and repair these assets that we own. As of the end of June, the city had outstanding bonded debt of $896 million. These funds are used for capital projects, with the exception of the certificates of participation, which reduce the city's public safety personnel retirement system liability, of which one of the city's largest liabilities is the net pension liabilities for both the Arizona State Retirement System and the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. The decrease you'll see there from 2022 is due to the issuance of those certificates of participation, reducing the city's liability. This is constitutionally protected, so we are required to carry this liability. So moving on to this chart shows the governmental funds' revenues, expenditures, and other financing sources and uses. The revenues are shown in red and the expenditures are shown in orange. Our revenues are higher than expenditures, which aligns with the city's conservative nature of spending less than the revenues that we receive. The other restricted funds on here include the special revenue funds and the permanent fund, which we stated as the cemetery. The increased amount in capital projects' funds revenue was reflecting the bond issuances. And as you see, the debt service funds are about equal because we fund the amount needed to pay debt through transfers. This chart shows the enterprise funds' operating and non-operating revenues and expenses. And again, the revenues are in red and expenses are in orange. The city is generating enough revenues to cover expenses. The enterprise funds include water and sewer, landfill, solid waste, and housing, along with the internal service funds, which are risk management, workers' compensation, employee benefits, fleet, and information technology. The city receives different types of revenue across all funds, and the proportion of each are shown here on the slide. Almost 60% of the city's total revenue comes from charges for services and local sales tax. Another significant source is grants and contributions. The majority of the city's expenses, almost 50%, are incurred in public safety and the water and sewer categories. Public safety expenses include those related to police and fire protection services provided to the community and are funded by the general fund. Water and sewer expenses are paid by the enterprise fund, which is funded primarily through paid fees for services. And with that, I'll pass it back to Megan Smith to talk about the city's financial health. Fiscal.
Fiscal health. Thanks, Megan. So bond ratings also assess financial health. Bond rating agencies such as Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch Ratings assign the ratings that reflect their analysis of the bond issuer's financial strength or capacity to pay both principal and interest. We'll look at the city's bond ratings over time a little bit deeper in the next slide. But most recently, Fitch assigned a AAA rating to our most recent GO bonds. In 2023, Moody's upgraded the city's transportation excise tax bonds from an A2 to an A1. In October of 2024, Moody's ratings also upgraded the city of Glendale's issuer rating from A1 to AA3. These upgrades reflect substantial strengthening of the city's economy and tax base with revenue growth and a much improved financial position supported by improved fiscal policies. So as I said, a bond rating is a grading given to a bond that indicates its creditworthiness. These rating agencies review and analyze data from the issuer's financial statements, such as the fund balance and liquidity, and then issue a rating based on financial ratios and other non-financial information. The higher a bond rating, the lower the interest rate it should carry, due to a lower risk, with all else equal. So a little bit about the ratings. For Standard &amp; Poor's, shown here in the middle column, AAA is the best rating, followed by a AA, single A, and BB, all the way down to a D. The D rating is used for bonds already in default, which means the underlying company would be unable to pay back the principal. Fitch's ratings are similar to S&amp;P's. The city didn't start using Fitch until 2021, so you'll see the NR in the years leading up to that point in the chart. Moody's uses a slightly different scale, but using the AAA, AA, A ratings, using a combination of capital and lowercase letters. From there, numbers or symbols further break down the letter-based ratings. For example, S&amp;P and Fitch, a rating of AA+ is better than an AA, and a rating of AA- is worse than an AA, but better than an A+. Moody's uses similar numbers to indicate relative quality within AA1 being the best AA rating, followed by a AA2 and then a 3. So after a series of downgrades, you'll see the city's credit ratings began to improve after 2016, reflecting the city's commitment to prudent fiscal decisions. The city continues to experience strong revenue growth. Due to the improving economy and economic development activities, local sales tax revenues increased 2.3% in this fiscal year compared to last year. We continue to monitor and manage the budget for the elimination of the residential rental tax that was effective on January 1st and any changes to state shared income tax in upcoming fiscal years. Finally, we have one more report to discuss. Arizona's constitution requires that each year the state's Economic Estimate Commission calculates the constitutional expenditure limitation for each city by adjusting its base 1980 base limit expenditures for population and inflation changes since that base year and any voter-approved permanent base adjustments or annexations as applicable. This expenditure limitation limits the city's spending of certain revenues on annual operating expenses. For example, expenditures from grants and aid from the federal government or some revenues from the state are not subject to this expenditure limitation. Cities look at the source of the money used to make payments to determine the expenditure subject to the limitation. The Arizona Auditor General's Office prescribes the AELR report and reviews the city's reports for compliance. Statute prescribes penalties if a city exceeds its limitation. This table shows our compliance with the state-imposed limitation. You'll see that the city was well below the limit in fiscal year 2023. We're working on completing the fiscal year 2024 report, so the numbers shown are unaudited, but we again expect to be well below the limit. That report is due to the Auditor General's Office by March 31st. And once our auditors complete their audit, we'll submit the report for review. It also included the 2025 limit, just for some perspective on how the limit increases annually. This concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Mayor? Thank you, good presentation. Two questions. In the past, we've talked about the CAFR, and today we're talking about the ACFR. Are they the same, or they're basically the same?
They're basically the same. There was a change in GASB requirements to rename the title of the report.
Okay, thank you. Well, that puts it all in a good perspective, then. We're not dealing with two different things. And then I just wanted to make an observation on slide 20. The city's credit ratings over time. I think it was back in about, oh, 2012, a little earlier than, well, maybe a little earlier than that, that the council increased our sales tax by seven tenths of a percent. And then it was referred to the ballot and the voters upheld that increase, and it went into place. But it had a five-year sunset clause on it. And if you look at the Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's ratings, they didn't really get better during '12, '13, and '14. In fact, in Standard &amp; Poor's, they went down. They also went down under Moody's. But it was in '15 and '16, as I recall, that the council lifted the sunset clause. It was a five-year sunset. The sales tax was supposed to disappear in five years, but the council lifted the sunset clause in that range. And once they did, and the bond market could see that we had a steady stream of money coming in, not a finite stream of money, then our bond rating steadily improved from that point forward. So oftentimes, people wonder what were the different keys to us getting out of the financial predicament we were in? And there's two of them right there. One, the council increased taxes. One, the council increased taxes, and then two, later they lifted the sunset clause. And that's really what kind of got the ship right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we're going to go back to item four now.
Five-year forecast of the major funds.
Mayor, members of the council, here provides staff report on item number four. Will be Amy Lindsay, our Assistant Director, and also Jonathan Hill, our Budget Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is the first budget workshop for the fiscal '25-'26 budget process. Today, we will be going through the fiscal year '25-'26 budget overview and have a discussion about both primary and secondary property tax. We will also be looking at the five-year financial forecasts for the general fund, the special revenue funds, and the enterprise fund. This slide shows the dates of the budget workshops and the voting meetings that are a part of the fiscal year 2025-'26 budget development process. This meeting is the first of five budget workshops where council will be presented information, including the overview of the budget process, property taxes, and the five-year financial forecasts for the major funds. The draft 10-year Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, as we often refer to it, will be presented and discussed with council on March 4th, 2025. There will be two all-day budget workshops on April 1st and April 3rd, 2025, where the departments will present and discuss with council their fiscal year '26 operating budget requests. The final budget workshop will take place on April 22nd, 2025, where council will be presented with the fiscal year 2026 operating capital improvement plan, debt service, and contingency budgets. The last three meetings in the calendar are in bold. These are the items in the budget calendar that have legally required deadlines. We schedule our budget calendar so that the legally required deadlines are much earlier than what is required by law. This allows the council flexibility in the calendar if needed. Tentative budget adoption is scheduled on May 13th, 2025. The maximum expenditure limitation is set upon adoption of the tentative budget, which basically means that after the tentative budget adoption, the budget cannot increase. The legal requirement for tentative budget adoption is on or before the third Monday in July of each fiscal year. So as you can see, we are doing that a little earlier than is required by law. Final budget adoption and discussion of the property tax levy is scheduled for June 10th, 2025. The legal requirement for final budget adoption is the first Monday in August, with at least 14 days between the adoption of the final budget and the adoption of the tax levy. And the final voting meeting is the adoption of the property tax levy, which is scheduled for June 24th, 2025. The legal requirement for the final tax levy is to be adopted by the third Monday in August. There are additional requirements for publications that are built into the schedule as well. The development of the city's budget process begins around September of each year and officially ends when the budget is adopted by council the following June. We often tell people the process feels a little bit like the painting of the Golden Gate Bridge. Once you've completed painting the bridge, you go back to the beginning and start all over. This graphic shows the general steps taken during the budget process, beginning with the development of the five-year financial forecasts, which we will be discussing with council today. Once staff completes the steps that are in this slide in gold, that information is brought to council in the form of a council workshop. Those steps are in this slide in red. Council then provides staff input through those workshops, which is then incorporated into the budget moving forward. The three gray boxes in the graphic are the voting council meetings where the budget is legally adopted. Revenues and fund balance, which on this slide are in the gold color, are on the left-hand side, which support the operating budget, the capital improvement plan, the city's debt service payments, and contingency, which are on the right-hand side of the slide. Revenues are the sources of funding that come into the city annually. Sales tax and state shared revenue are the two primary sources of revenue. Other sources of revenue include development impact fees, user fees, which fund the enterprise funds, bond sales, and grants. We monitor all revenues closely, especially sales taxes and state shared revenue, since they are our two primary sources of revenue. Expenditures are the operating budget of the city. They're basically the day-to-day costs, such as police and fire operations, personnel costs, utilities, and neighborhood recreation programs. The Capital Improvement Plan, or Capital Outlay, again, we often refer to as the CIP, are improvements to streets, water and sewer lines, parks, and city facilities. Those items are typically non-routine in nature and cost more than $50,000 and have a useful life of five years or more. Debt service is the principal and interest on the city's debt. Some of the types of debt service that the city have include the following. General obligation debt, or GO debt, as we often call it, is paid for with secondary property taxes. We have excise tax debt, which is paid by the general fund. Transportation debt is paid by a dedicated transportation sales tax. Water and sewer debt is paid by the water and sewer utility. Landfill has general obligation bonds, which were issued in fiscal year '22, and that debt service is paid by landfill user fees. And we also have the certificates of participation, which were issued in fiscal year '22 to pay down unfunded liability in the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, or PSPRS, and that debt service is paid by the general fund. The fourth item in the expenditure category is contingency, which is used for unforeseen expenditures or emergencies. It's an appropriated line item, but is not a reserve fund or savings account such as fund balance. It's really only spending authority that's in the budget. The general fund, we have $5 million in assumed contingency for the forecast, and any use of contingency requires council approval. And with that, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Hill.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'll be taking over the rest of the slides. I'll have property tax coming up first, and then we'll jump into the five-year forecast for our seven major funds. So one of council's financial policies is regarding property tax. And that reads, "To ensure ongoing general fund stability, the primary property tax levy will be evaluated each year to determine where it should be set." This slide represents how the property tax split for an average Glendale property. As you can see, the first circle on the left is for schools. That's at 59%. The next two circles are related to the city of Glendale. The yellow one is primary property tax at 4%. And the gray one is secondary property tax at 14%. Then we have the county at 14% and then special school districts at 8%. This is a property tax bill example for your average median home in the city of Glendale. The number at the top right is the median home value of $445,000. As we look into the table, the first two lines, we have assessed value and full cash value. The assessed value is what the Merco County uses to calculate the tax bill, and that's the information in the second half of the paragraph or in the table. The last column on the right shows the differences between 2023 to 2024. So as you can see, the full cash value of this particular property went up by $73,000, or about 25%. But the assessed value only went up by $6,500, or 5%. And that's due to Prop. 179. So that started in 2015, what limited the assessed value to only allow it to be increased by a maximum 5%. Then we go into the table in the red. We have Glendale's primary security rates. In 2023, Glendale's combined rate equals 1.5626. And that equals the total portion of Glendale for 2023 on this particular property was $205.86. In 2024, the rate decreased to 1.4925, which is our current combined property tax rate. And that total was $206.44. So this is an example that demonstrates a 2% increase to the primary levy. A 2% increase is a statutory limit a city can raise a primary levy once they have reached their maximum primary levy amount. This example does not assume any construction or increase in assessed valuation of property value. This example uses our 2024 adopted property tax levy, the $7,8912, and applies a 2% increase to the primary levy only. As you can see, a 2% increase would generate about $140,000 in revenue for the city. So the last time council raised a property tax levy was in fiscal year 2016. And this graph shows the cumulative effect of not increasing the primary tax levy. The red indicates the actual primary property revenue we received by year. And the yellow represents how much additional we would have received for that year if we continued to raise the primary levy by the statutory limit of 2%. So in fiscal year 2025, we received just over 7 million. If we would continue to increase the primary property levy by 2%, we would have received additional $1.2 million this year. The cumulative effect of not increasing the primary levy by 2% over the last nine years is $5.6 million. So this graph represents our primary property tax revenue growth that has been contributing to new construction being added to the property rolls. The red represents a flat levy that I just mentioned. As you can see, it's remained flat since the last time we increased it in FY '16. And the yellow represents the amount that is attributed to new construction. So in fiscal year '25, flat levy $5.5 million plus a new construction of $1.5 equals that $7 million on the previous slide.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. So how do we account for the new development, though? That it's not, I mean, it increases our property tax base, new development increases our base by more, especially annexations being brought into the city of Glendale? And how do we account for that?
That would be that amount in yellow on this slide.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that's why, that was the idea of this slide, is to show you that our levy has remained the same, but our revenue has increased. And the reason why is revenue's increased is because of that yellow amount on that bar. So this is the cumulative effect. So since for fiscal year '17 through '25, the amount of new construction total cumulative is 1.5 or 1.4. Last year alone was $455,000.
Okay, Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor. Just, I thought you were highlighting the fact that because we haven't increased the property tax, we were foregoing the amounts on Slide 12, but that's not the case.
That's this slide. That's the previous slide on Slide 11.
Okay. It looks the same, but it means a different thing.
Sorry, I apologize for changing the colors. As we go through, you can see them attached to red and yellow. This slide represents the combined property tax rate for the city of Glendale from fiscal year 2016 through fiscal years 2025. As you can see, the combined rate has significantly increased since adopting the flat levy. And this is due to the valuation increase and the new construction. So the flat levy minus the increased valuation, the rate has to decrease. This slide shows the average median home value in Glendale. So the orange line represents the market value of that median home value in Glendale. The numbers on the left represent that home value. So you can see in 2017, that amount was about $200,000 for a median home value in Glendale. All the way to the right, you can see in fiscal year 2025, that has increased to, I think, it's about 417 this year. And the green line, the numbers on the right represent the green line. So you can see, this is the average property tax bill a Glendale resident would pay. So in 2017, they paid just about $200 in Glendale property tax. And all the way in this year, it's just about 206, as I previously, as I mentioned on those slides previously. So although the home value has doubled due to the Glendale's flat levy policy, we've been able to keep the Glendale property tax payment flat. To summarize, to summarize, the primary levy, primary tax levy revenue is to cover general fund expenses. There is a statutory limit that we can only increase it by a maximum of 2%. And as I mentioned, the cumulative effect for fiscal year '25 is $1.2 million of the flat levy policy. So at this time, this is one of two council consensuses that we need regarding primary property levy. There are three options. Option one, would to be to continue with the flat levy policy. This will make it the 10th year in a row. Council has kept that flat levy policy. Option two, we keep that rate that I showed on that chart. We can keep that flat. And then, as I mentioned before, the 2% increase. If I can get a consensus on one of those three options.
Yeah, I don't know about everybody else, but I certainly would support doing what we've done for 10 years. Anybody else?
I agree, Mayor. We haven't raised the property tax, the primary property tax levy in, I don't know, nine years or something like that, so. And with the amount of new properties coming onto the tax bills, we're not really losing any ground by not doing it. And I think, I mean, not only are we proud that we don't do it, I think people, it's not really the juice, to me, anyway, really isn't worth the squeeze on this, anyway. The amount of revenue that it generates or how people feel about raising the property tax, I just think we should just stick with our policy and keep it flat. Thank you.
Mayor? I agree with Vice Mayor Tomachoff. I don't think that we need to increase it either.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm in agreement as well, and I want to point out that the percent of our city revenue that comes from property tax is quite small. School districts depend on property tax a lot more than we do. So if we don't raise it, it doesn't really have that much impact. Like, we saw a million-something over, almost 10 years, nine years of not increasing it. Had we increased it, it wouldn't have given us that much more money. So it's easy for us to say, "We're not going to increase your property taxes." We get most of our money from the sales tax. And that's where, if we're going to be serious about cutting taxes, that's where it's going to happen. And, of course, we've, with the help of the state legislature, have cut a big sales tax in the last year. So we have, that's the one that hurts us is when we lose sales tax revenue. Thank you.
I'd like to keep it the same, sir, as well.
I agree with the mayor.
Okay. Mr. Melner, you have any comments?
I agree as well.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, I just, I believe that continuing this philosophy of keeping the property tax level is a good plan for the indefinite future. You know, despite Councilmember Turner's comments, you know, if we had continued to do it, it's a tax that isn't generated by buying something. You have a choice there. With property tax, you don't have a choice. And so I think it does make a big difference that we keep the property tax level and we continue that process.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayors and council. So that takes us to our secondary property tax revenue. So this slide represents our secondary property tax revenue growth that has been contributing to new construction being added. So again, the flat levy policy for the secondary tax is the red. The yellow is due to new construction. The total, yeah, those two amounts, and that's how much revenue we receive each year for the secondary property tax levy. So for fiscal year '25, just about $24 million. And then again, so to summarize the secondary levy, oh, this is related to debt services. So the revenue we received for secondary levy is to pay the debt service on our GO bonds. So second time, council consensus, three same options as before. Continue, 10th year in a row, flat levy policy for the secondary tax. And then, or leave the rate the same, or a 2% increase.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. I believe, was it 2020, I believe, Mr. Phelps, we adopted a resolution to not bond? That's basically what secondary property tax is, and this is for the benefit of the new council members as well. But we adopted a resolution that we would not bond if it was to increase the secondary property tax rate.
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. So, if the direction from the council was to do like a flat rate and/or increase this in any way, we would have to do that via a, a, a resolution, you know, I guess, zeroing out the prior resolution.
Doing another resolution, a substitute, okay. I'm, 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 I think we're good with what we're doing now. I, I think residents, especially when we're asking, a lot of the bonds we're doing are renewing authority, I think, anyway. And the, and we have some things that are going to be coming off the books here over the next few years. So, I don't think we need to increase the secondary property tax. I think we're doing okay with what we're doing. Thank you.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
There you go.
I agree as well.
Are there any additional questions regarding the property tax? Next, I'll be covering the five-year forecasts. As Ms. Lindsay previously mentioned, the five-year forecast is a first step in the budget process. The forecasts are a high-level overview and do not represent the budget for fiscal year 26, but is one of the tools used to develop a balanced budget that could later be presented to council. Long-term financial planning considers economic conditions and future spending as best practice that provides insight into the city's future financial capacity, ability to provide core services, and achieve financial sustainability. It's a model that can be used to foresee and prevent future financial challenges and is used when communicating with our rating agencies. Five-year financial forecasts are recognized as best practice by the Government Finance Officers Association. Some of the drivers we use to build our five-year forecasts is data collected from several sources, including the state of Arizona, like the Arizona Department of Revenue, Arizona League of Cities and Towns, Arizona Joint Legislative Budget Committee, Arizona Department of Transportation, our own City of Glendale historical data, and information we receive from other comparable cities. The five-year forecast provides the ability to see how decisions made this current year affect the city in the future. During this presentation, we will highlight financial trends in the general fund, special revenue fund, which, which consists of public safety, perf or highway user revenue funds, and transportation sales tax. And then, we'll have enterprise funds, solid waste, landfill, and water. We won't be going over the water five-year forecast today. That will be presented at a future workshop when they present their rate study. So, this graph represents our fiscal year 25 forecasted revenue of the, of the seven major funds, how, how much is distributed between all seven. So, this is a little different than the slide before. This is just only focusing on our, these seven major funds. And so, as you can see, the general fund is our largest fund. It's our largest fund for the city, and that accounts for 50% of the forecasted revenue. And we have water, the enterprise fund, at 24%. Transportation at 7%. Public safety, both police and fire, 6%. Solid waste, 4%. Perf, 3%, and landfill at 3%. So, because general fund is our largest revenue or fund, we'll dive deeper into that. As you can see, city sales tax, as Councilmember Turner mentioned, is our largest revenue source, that's 49% of our fiscal year forecasted, 25 forecasted revenue. Then, we had state shared income tax at 50% and a state shared sales tax at 11%. So, all these three are put, are put next to each other. So, you add that up, and it's 75% of our forecasted general fund revenue comes from some sort of tax, income or sales tax. Next, we have intergovernmental, intergovernmental payments at 12%. Fees, licenses, permits, 7%. Other miscellaneous at 4%. And then, as I mentioned regarding the property tax, that's 7 million. In fiscal year 25, that's represents 2% of our general fund forecasted revenue.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. You, maybe you're getting to it later. Are you forecasting any decrease in the state shared revenue?
Yes, we'll get to that, but yes, we are due to the flat. And I'll mention that, the flat, the flat income tax.
Okay, thank you.
And then, again, because city sales taxes are our largest general fund contributor, we'll take a closer look at that. As you can see, the start on the left represents total city sales tax collected across all funds. So, in fiscal year 2019, you can see we received 172 million in city sales tax. And that grew to 285 million in fiscal year 2024. The information on the right shows how much city sales tax has grown year over year. In fiscal year 2019 and fiscal years 2020, sales tax increased by 5.8%, which is a typical increase prior to fiscal year 21. A 5% average was pretty common. And then, fiscal year 2021 through fiscal years 2023, as you can see, the sales tax grew significantly year over year with 11.3% in fiscal years 21, 22.4% in fiscal years 2022, and 13.6% in 2023. And then, last year, our sales tax only grew by 1.4% over fiscal year 24. I'll mention this again, it's not on this slide currently. July through December tax revenue collections, we're sitting about 5% higher than fiscal year 24 for the same periods.
Mayor?
I don't want to be a pain, but do we have some idea of what accounted for the decrease in the increase? If that's the right way to say it? From, I, obviously, a lot of that was probably construction sales tax. But we're, we're now, fiscal year 2024, we're below our average at about 5 or 6%. So, do we, how do we account for that?
So, Mayor, members of the council, during that period of time, you had the COVID year. So, you, you had revenues growing very heavily coming out of COVID and a lot of federal spending. And then, in addition to that, you had very high inflation. So, those years when the, when our revenues were growing very rapidly is a combination of money being spent in the market, the availability of funds, and then rapid inflation causing our revenues to, you know, go much higher. Because your, your sales tax is a percentage of the sale, and the value of those sales were going up pretty strongly during that high inflationary period. And then, in 2024, what you see is that our revenues are still up, but they're just not going up as quickly as they did in those years when it was very, when, when we had very strong revenue, revenue growth. And then, as Jonathan mentioned here in fiscal year 25, so far, year-to-date, we're still seeing revenues up about 5%. It is being held up by construction within the city. And a lot of the money coming in, in those years in '21, '22, and '23 was also construction-related. That's still strong, where retail and those categories are, are seeing some softening. But Jonathan has another slide that's going to show you a little bit more detail category by category, kind of where revenues are falling now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rios.
Mayor, Ms. Rios, thank you for mentioning inflation and its impact on this. As, as the cost of goods goes up, the percentage we take in tax goes up as well. But the amount of money a household has to spend doesn't necessarily increase. So, the overall economic activity doesn't necessarily get larger. Now, we have had household income increases over the last four years. I don't think it's keeping pace with inflation. But I guess that's why we're not seeing all of it rising at the same time. It's because families don't have, and businesses don't have an unlimited amount of money to, to spend. They're having to curtail spending to, to stay with, within their incomes. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, one of the things I think is important to note is that when there's this high inflation, yes, our revenue starts coming in higher, but we are also paying higher prices. So, we see that reflected in our expenditure side of the budget, where things like, especially for building materials and that, but even things like, you know, landscaping and services and those types of things, chemicals, all of our own commodities, we're subject to that inflation as well. So, we see revenue coming in faster. But the expenditures are also for us growing at that same very high rate.
And with that, I'll move into our general fund of revenue assumptions for our forecast. To the city sales tax category, as mentioned in the ACRA presentation, we have the elimination of the residential rental tax. In fiscal year 2024, we collected a total of 13.7 million for residential rental. That was across all funds. So, 7.5 of that was general fund and 3.1 million in both transportation sales tax and public safety sales tax. The five-year forecast assumes conservative growth for fiscal years 2026 through fiscal years 2030, including a reduction in sales tax beginning, or in construction sales tax beginning in fiscal year 26 and reaching an average trend in fiscal year 2030. The average growth in all other categories is about 2%. As we anticipate construction sales tax to slow down, we also anticipate the corresponding building permits, construction fees, and inspections to decrease at the same pace. In last year's forecast, we estimated revenue for FII, FII Resort. And the updated fiscal year 2025 forecast, we removed that. And then, we assumed a very conservative VII revenue for the end of fiscal year 2026. State shared sales tax forecast is consistent with Arizona Department of Revenue and the League of Arizona Cities and Towns. State shared income tax is based on collections from two years ago. And the state adoption of the 2.5% flat income tax will result in a reduction of state's shared income taxes, which is reflected in the fiscal year 2026 forecast. This forecast also had updated repayment schedule from the Arizona Sports and Tours Authority for Calhoun Back Ranch.
Mayor? Can you tell us a little bit more about that update on the repayment schedule?
Let's see, so, due to, how do I put this? Our repayment schedule has increased due to the repayments to another facility being, they reached the end of that one. So, the distribution to the two remaining facilities increased our contribution. So, we have Calhoun Back Ranch, and then there's one other facility.
Mayor, members of the council, we, we can get you a schedule of that if you'd like. We get that from ASTA, from the, excuse me. Sorry about that. We get a schedule of what they predict that they're going to be able to pay. And as Jonathan said, they paid off early on some of the other facilities. So, they started, more revenue has been coming to us since that point in time. I think it's around, Amy, is it around 8 million a year that we're getting now? But we have a, a schedule of it that we receive from ASTA. We can get that out to the council if you're interested.
Yes, thank you, that's good news.
Mayor? Ms. Rios, could you also include the amount of money we're remitting to ASTA also in that report when you send it to us?
Mayor, members of the council, certainly, we can do that.
Thank you.
So, based on those general revenue assumptions I just mentioned, this slide shows our general fund forecasted revenues for fiscal years 2025 through 2030. The red bars on the left indicates the actuals general fund revenue we have received. And then, the yellow on the right represents our forecasted revenue. So, as you can see in fiscal year 2025, our forecast is similar to our actuals from 2024 revenue. And this is due to the half-year loss of residential rental that began, the beginning of this month. In 20, fiscal year 2026, you see a little dip. And that's to recognize the full annual loss of the residential rental tax, as well as, as I mentioned, the decline in construction sales tax. Then, in fiscal years 27 through fiscal years 2030, you have, we have a conservative growth, as mentioned in the previous slides.
Yeah, I'd like to ask you a question. It's almost certain that we're going to have the legislature change our food tax, almost certain. Is, is that in any of this for '26 or beyond?
No, we haven't put that in here. That is the amount of food home tax or food sales tax we received for fiscal year '24 is $21 million. So, as we go through these slides in our forecast, and the next slide has our sales tax totals received, you subtract $21 million from that, that's a, that's a big hit to the city. Any times at, by, you know, the five years of our forecast, you can see the impact. But we have now forecasted that into this model we have today. That information came out, I believe, last Monday.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, and they haven't done it yet, but by all indications, it certainly looks like that's going to be the case.
I, Mayor, if I could, I agree. And I'm wondering if you could make me create a subcategory for that? I mean, I know it's sales tax, but it's, it's a different sales tax, just so we can kind of, at least when we're looking at it, where you can be looking at it thinking, seeing where that's going to go off the cliff. Maybe in, in brackets or something what that amount is. But that's definitely going to be a substantial difference in the amount of revenue we're receiving, for sure. And I believe they're looking at a referendum. I, is that, I don't know who's here, but I think that's how they're looking at taking, taking that to the voters, is what I heard. Which I can't imagine the voters are going to be like, yeah, I want to pay, I want to pay food sales tax. So, there's something definitely to be on our radar, though. I agree with you, Mayor.
Mayor, Council, yes, we can get that information or start providing. And just like I mentioned, I did gather last year's number of food tax, and that was 21 million across all funds. So, this table shows the city's tax, the total city's tax collected for the past five years across all funds. So, I'd like to focus on a couple of items for comparing fiscal year '24 to fiscal years '23. As you can see, the total collected for fiscal year 2024 was 285 million or 4 million higher than fiscal year 2023, which represents that 1.4% increase, as I mentioned in previous slide. Next, I'll take a look at the retail sales category and the retail sales greater than $5,000 for fiscal years '23 and '24. And you can see, if you combine those categories, actually decrease for 2024 with a combined decrease of $2.8 million. And Vicki kind of alluded to this previously. Construction sales tax category remains very strong, went up $8 million or 25% from fiscal years '23 through '24. The last column on the right is our current year-to-date sales tax collected from July through December. So, as I mentioned, we are about 5% higher than the same time last year. And so, the, just as a reminder, the, the December sales tax that we received is for November sales. So, the December or Christmas holiday sales, we'll get that, we're receiving that this month. We'll have those numbers finalized in mid-February. Now, we'll move on to the general fund operating expenditure assumptions. We have an average increase across all categories of 5% for fiscal years 2026, 4% increase for fiscal years '27, and then, a 3.5 increase for fiscal years '28 through '23. Fiscal years '26 includes 9.3 million increase for salaries, which also includes temporary pay and overtime, and a 3.7 million increase in benefits and retirement. We've also forecasted the increases to public safety, memorandum of understanding, as well as a replacement of fire department apparatus, radius for the police departments, and improvements at city facilities. The city, the city issued certificates of participations in fiscal year 2022 to pay down unfunded liability in the public safety personnel retirement system. The debt service payment for fiscal years 2025 is 19.5 million. And for years fiscal year '26 to fiscal year 2030, it increased to an average of 21 million per year. We've also committed 20 million in committed fund balance for pension reserve fund fiscal years '26. The vehicle replacement fund increased from 3.2 million to 3.5 million, which is an 8% increase for fiscal years '25 to '26. Contingency is budgeted at 5 million in fiscal year 2025 and 2026. Contingency amount is evaluated annually. And as a reminder, the use of contingency requires council approval. Next up brings our general fund five-year forecast. A quick mention, the presentation posted on our same website. The last column under general government CIP was missing a number. The math still tied it out. That was, unfortunately, did that get entered in on the slide, but that has been updated to the copy you have at your desk and as well as the presentation you see in front of you. So, on this one, the very first sell with numbers of 287 million for the beginning fund balance fiscal year '25, this is where accounting and budget cross paths. Once they close the year out, as I mentioned previously, the ACRA, they gave us the fund balance numbers, and we enter that into our model. The rest of the data you see on this slide and the rest of the forecast are, 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 they're all our assumptions based on the information we provided for revenue assumptions that I mentioned and the expenditures.
Mayor? I had a question from Ms. Rios yesterday on this slide on the, regarding the unsigned fund balance and the general government CIP. There was a discrepancy in the, in the numbers there. Did you want to address that?
Mayor, members of the council, that's what Jonathan was trying to say is, on this version, you see that number, that 15,758,862 as being assigned for general government capital projects. On the online version and the version that we, if, if you had printed it, you know, yesterday or sometime before, that number- that number was missing. But on here, we've updated it and also we let the clerk know, so she'll update it on the online version as well. And what you have in front of you, it's, it's included there now, but it, it wasn't, that number was missing.
Oh, okay. But, but Mayor, if I could, but I'm looking at the online versions and I, I mean, I pulled it up on my iPad this morning and it's.
Mayor, members of council, Julie will, uh, the clerk will update it after the meeting.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, over here. Um, Mayor, I, I just wanted to ask, um, going from a 1.4 million deficit to a $49 million deficit, um, can you explain to us how that is sustainable and, and what we could do about that?
So Mayor, members of the council, um, basically that's spending down of fund balance. So over the, over the course of the five years, our investments into, um, our own infrastructure and that, we're drawing down our fund balance, um, and unreserving it as we go. Um, and so it, it looks like it's a deficit. It looks like a big number, but it's actually just a, a planned spend down of money that we have on hand. We consider those to be one-time expenditures. So we, what we look for is on an ongoing basis, is it sustainable, um, over this five-year period and beyond? And we have our models built to look at the, um, at beyond this. But again, this is just a planned spend down for, uh, primarily for capital projects.
Thank you.
As I continue with the general fund forecast, I'll just walk down the different items. On the left, as I mentioned, we've got beginning fund balance. We have operating revenue, ongoing operating expenditures, one-time operating expenditures. We have our net transfers and then contingency. So those make up either their surplus or deficit, and then we get our ending fund balance. The assigned fund balances are listed below the ending fund balance. Some of those assignments have been removed in fiscal years 26 and forward because the items will be added to the ongoing budget and no longer need to be assigned. The unassigned fund balance is the last gray row towards the bottom of the chart. And the city's fund balance policy is that the unassigned fund balance is 25% of ongoing expenditures. And the last, the very last, uh, cell, the red, um, that assume, or the red and white above it is $84 million. That assumes it to count if the 10 million in contingency for fiscal year 25 and 26 is spent, but it's not usually something that is spent. That's something we just anticipate. To summarize the general fund, uh, the elimination of city sales tax for residential rental, slowdown of construction and sales tax and related building permits, garden construction. And then we will continue to monitor revenues, the legislation, economy closely. As in our practice, the forecast is conservative to ensure financial stability. With that, we'll move to special revenue funds. We have three major special revenue funds. Highway user revenue fund, commonly referred to as HERF. HERF revenue includes gasoline, use tax, fuel, use fuel tax, motor carrier taxes, vehicle license taxes, motor vehicle registration fees and other miscellaneous fees. These correct, these fees are, these revenues are collected by the state and distributed to the cities. Next, we have a transportation fund and our public safety fund. These funds are generally from our city's sales tax and our half percent, uh, of our sales tax contribute towards each of those funds. Special revenue funds are legally restricted. Transportation and HERF funds are capital intensive. The capital plans for those programs will be updated during the budget process. Revenue assumptions for HERF are extremely conservative growth in that area. And then transportation and public safety, because they're tied to sales tax, they have the same revenue assumptions as our general fund. And for the highway user or for, for HERF, we have a conservative 2% annual increase in the forecast. And that brings us to our HERF five-year forecast. As previously mentioned, 2% annual increase in revenue is assumed throughout the forecast. The capital app, the capital outlay program, uh, for HERF is, uh, mostly due to pavement management. And this will update as we present the FY '26 through 2035 capital improvement plan, uh, which will be presented to council or bring to council for discussion on March 4th. Contingency in the HERF fund has been budgeted at 1.5 million per year for fiscal year 2025 and fiscal year 2026. This fund does not typically use its contingency. At the end of the forecast, uh, as you can see, they are above their fund balance policy. Next, we have transportation sales tax fund. As I mentioned, it seems revenue assumption as a general fund. Uh, this capital outlay program for transportation is heavily, uh, pavement management related for fiscal year 26 through 2030. Contingency in the transportation sales tax fund has been budgeted 300,000. And this is not, uh, the contingency is not normally used in the transportation fund. Their fund balance, uh, policy is 10% of opera, of ongoing operating revenue. Next up, we have public safety for police, and then fire will be next. Uh, same revenue assumption as general fund. There are no expenditures in these funds. These funds are transferred into, into general fund to cover expenditures for the police department. And you can see the deficit in years 25 through 28, and that's to draw down, uh, their fund balance.
Mayor? Yeah, that's what I was going to say is it does look like we're going to dip below the fund balance policy on both the public safety, sales tax. Are we, are we going to be looking at any adjustments to that?
The fund balance at year, um, fund balance policy is 1.4 million in fiscal year 2030, and, uh, fund balance is almost 1.8.
Well, I guess what, what's, what stands out to me is the expenditures drastically start to reduce, you know, fiscal year 27, 28, and going forward, as we plug in. But if we were to use the actual expenditures of, you know, 33 million, 31 million, then we definitely would be in a deficit. So the, the, the numbers, the, the placeholders, I guess, numbers are keeping us from getting into a deficit.
Mayor, members of the council, so what you're seeing again is a planned spend down of fund balance. So they have a fund balance right now of about 8.6 million. And each year in the, um, surplus deficit line, you see us drawing that fund balance down. But then when we get to years 28, 29, and 29, 30, we, we're, we just have the same amount coming in as going out. So we're drawing it down over those first four years, and then it's just, we, we stopped drawing it down. So we've been doing this for a while. And again, five years out is so, um, so hard to predict what will happen by then. That again, next year, we'll probably be showing, okay, well, we still have enough to use at least three years or four, where we're drawing it down until we get to the point where everything coming in is going out. Those aren't real expenditures. That's a transfer over to the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
So next up, we have the public safety sales tax for fire. And as Vicky just mentioned, it's the same as, uh, police with planned drawdown, uh, through fiscal years 25 through 27. And to summarize, a special revenue fund summary, to watch revenues and economy closely, and then manage the capital outlay state within the fund balance policies. Next, we have our enterprise fund, including solid waste, landfill and water service funds, water sewer funds. These funds are supported primarily from user fees or charges and operate much like a not-for-profit business. As I mentioned previously, the water forecast will be presented at a future council workshop. I believe that's February 11th. The revenue assumptions in the following forecast assume council-approved rates increases only, as well as some nominal growth in revenues. Enterprise funds typically are more capital intensive. The solid waste fund includes the recent council adopted fee structure. The fund has a contingency amount of 200,000 for fiscal years 25 and 26, which is typically unspent at the end of the fiscal year. The solid waste funds meets the fund balance policy to the forecast. And just as my solid waste presented their five-year forecast back in October, uh, the differences you may see between, uh, that forecast and this one is fiscal year 2024 is, uh, closed. So we updated, uh, the ending fund or the beginning fund balance fiscal year 25, as well as updated fiscal year 25 revenue. The landfill fund includes a council adopted fee structure. The fund has a contingency amount of 500,000 for fiscal years 25 and 26, which is typically unspent at the end of the fiscal year. And the landfill does not, uh, landfill fund does not meet its fund balance policy by year three, which is fiscal year 2028. Summarize the enterprise fund, we have the watch revenue economy closely. Again, manage the capital outlay to minimize debt service costs, ensure responsible timing of rate adjustments, plan for future debt issuance if necessary, and again, the water forecast will present in the future. Any questions? The next up, we'll have, um, we'll see you guys to discuss the capital improvement plan on March 4th.
Discussion of a potential 2025 GO bond election?
Mayor, members of council here for the, uh, final item on today's agenda. I think, uh, Vicky Rios, our assistant city manager, will help kick things off.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor, members of the council. You'll have to bear with me. I do have a cough, so if I stop to start coughing, I, my apologies in advance. Um, we're here today to talk about the potential for a general obligation bond special election. So we're going to talk a little bit, um, and set the stage about what general obligation bonds are, especially for the public and for our new, um, members. And then in addition to that, um, we're going to talk about, um, just bonds in general, the amount of authority that we have remaining. Um, s- some information about the potential for that election. And then, um, hopefully, uh, today we come for, uh, get a consensus of the council of how they want to move forward. Next sliding. So as you heard a little bit earlier today, general obligation bonds are, um, paid for using secondary property tax. So in fact, that's the only thing you can use the secondary property tax for. Um, and you, again, today confirmed your flat levy policy. So when we build our models for the amount of debt that we can issue, we assume that there will be some increase to the property tax levy from new properties coming on, um, on, uh, the city's property tax rolls, but no, um, increase in the property tax rate. In fact, as those properties come on, the tax rate actually goes down, as Jonathan showed you earlier. Uh, general obligation bonds must be authorized by the voters. And when you hear us talking about them, you'll hear us using three different terms. The first term is authorization. That's the amount the voters have said that you can issue in bonds. So we call that bond authority or bond authorization. That's the, again, the amount the voters have approved that you can issue. And then you have general obligation bonds that have already been issued. Those are, um, bonds that, or bonds, what we sometimes call them bonds outstanding. So that means that, um, we've already issued those bonds to fund capital projects. Um, and then lastly, um, you'll hear us talk about future, um, bond authority that we may need. Um, and that would be bond authority that hasn't been approved by the voters yet, or projects that we have that we're assuming we could issue bonds for. But in order to do that, we would need new authority from the voters. There are constitutional limits on the amount of debt that a city can issue as general obligation bonds. Um, Jonathan showed you again earlier on a property tax bill. At the top of it, you have net assessed full cash value. Um, that is calculated by the, um, Maricopa County Assessor. It's not the number, um, that your property tax bill is based on. Your property tax bill is actually based on the limited property value. Um, but the constitutional limits as to how much debt the city can issue under general obligation bonds is based on that net assessed full cash value. We can have no more than 20% of that value for water, sewer, public safety, streets, transportation, open space and parks. And we can have no more than 6% in debt amount, um, of that full assessed cash value for general purposes, which would be for things like, um, city hall or general government buildings, libraries and things like that. We're not anywhere near those, uh, limits at the moment. But it is worth it to, you know, we have to report that every year, but we're not near those limits at this time. Um, again, a little bit of, uh, repeat information. The primary property tax levy can be used for any general fund, and it can be, uh, increased a maximum amount of 2% per year. The secondary levy is to be used only for paying debt on general obligation bonds. And again, we assume it grows a little bit as we add new construction. Um, as was discussed a little bit earlier in October of 2020, the city council adopted an ordinance that said that, um, they would not issue new general obligation bonds if the levy amount would, uh, have to go up, um, other than for the amount that it increases by growth. And so this policy is still in place. So when we model out, um, what kind of debt we might issue in the future, we follow this policy. We only include, um, increases in the, in the, um, in revenue into that debt service fund based on new property being added to the tax rolls. And this is just an illustration of that, uh, same thing, where you can see the property tax historically and what it's been, and it's hovering right around 22, 23 million. It goes up just a little bit every year. And again, that's due to the new properties being added, um, either by annexation or infill projects or what, what have you. Um, and this is another illustration of the same, um, same thing. It's just showing you, uh, the amount in oranges, the amount that we had in growth every year. And, um, the amount in red is how inflation performed during the same period of time. So you can see most of the time, we don't keep up with, um, inflation in costs, by having this flat levy policy. But that's okay. We just wanted to show you that, um, that it does put pressure on this as a revenue source because the inflation and the cost of building projects is going up faster than that property tax levy is going up. Uh, we've shown this many years in a row. This is our current annual debt service. It's been updated, uh, starting in 2025. And what you see, um, the, the red is principal and the orange is interest. Uh, combined, again, those two numbers are right around 20 million, but debt starts to fall off. We're paying off debt. We pay off some in 2027 and some more in 2031 until, um, it just keeps decreasing every year until 2043. So what that, what that means is that we have some capacity. This is what, another term that I use. We have capacity to issue new debt because we can fill the bucket up back up to that 20 million without raising the property tax levy. So if you go to the next slide, you can see that now we show, okay, the blue is what we have in existing debt. The orange in this case is new debt that we plan to issue, but we already have authorization for, from the voters. And then the gray coming in would be, okay, as other debt is paid off, if we had the authority from the voters, we could issue new debt, and we would be able to keep that property tax levy still fairly flat. It's only increasing, it's only assumed to increase here by the value of new property being added to the tax rolls. So that's why we say we have the capacity. If we had the authority, we could, um, issue new debt and fund new projects without having to raise property taxes. So we included some pictures of the kinds of things that we use to fund, uh, or that we use bonds to fund. So city hall is one, a part of the funding for city hall is coming from general. Sorry, coming from general obligation bonds. Parts of it are coming from cash as well, but some of it is from general obligation bonds. Uh, we use general. We use general obligation bonds to replace underground fuel tanks, especially at some of our public safety facilities. We use park bonds to fund the lake at Heroes Park. We've been using public safety authority and issuing bonds to remodel our public safety buildings. These are happen to be photos of the sign building. And then in addition to that, we've also remodeled a number of fire stations. I don't have pictures of all of those, but that's another thing that we've been using, public safety bonds in particular for. We use general obligation bonds to fund street reconstruction. So here's an example of a street that was reconstructed along Camelback between the Loop 101 and 91st Avenue. And then we use general obligation bonds when we have them to fund flood control projects. We also use matching funds. This is often matched by funds from the Maricopa County Flood Control District. And these are just some more flood control projects that were completed that helped keep water out of people's homes, obviously. And then we also used in Parks and Recreation, bond funding to complete splash pads. And and again, the fishing pond out at Heroes. So when we have the authority, these are the types of big capital projects that we fund from bonds. So I'm going to switch gears just a little bit now and talk about where the city moving forward could use additional bond authority. So in the library, we were initially had 25 million in bond authority given by the voters. Over the years, it could have been as far as long ago as 1981, but a lot of bonds passed around 2007. There was also a big bond that passed in 2000, I'm sorry, 1999. So we had 25 million, little over 25 million in bond authority for libraries. We have only 6 million of that remaining. So that means we've already used 19 or so million funding different projects at libraries. We have in the five-year CIP plans for almost 26 million in bond funded projects, but we are we are lacking that 26 million in bond authority. In the 10-year CIP, which I don't have on the slide, but I went and and looked it up because I anticipated there might be a question. We have $41 million in projects in your planned 10-year CIP. So without the bond authority from the voters, those projects that are part of that 25 or 41 million would have to be delayed until such time as we find some other funding source. In governments facilities, we had 40, just almost 41 million. We only have 3.7 million in authority remaining. In the five-year CIP, we had planned about 7.5 million in projects. In the 10-year CIP, there's 23 million. Those are for things like the municipal operations complex. That the yard, the MOC is part of that. And again, without additional authority, those projects would have to be delayed or deferred. In flood control, we had at 1.20 and a half, almost 21 million. We only have less than 2 million in remaining authority. And in the five-year CIP, we have plans for 17.2 million. In the 10-year CIP, that number is up to 25 million in flood control projects. Again, that would have to be delayed or deferred if we didn't have bond authority. We'd have to wait until we find some other type of funding source. And then in addition to that, in Parks and Recreation, we had 16 million. We have no more remaining authority. We have 17 million planned in the first five years and a total of 79 million in the 10-year CIP. That's because of the aquatic or the recreation center out at Heroes is planned or was planned for bond funding, but we don't have any remaining authority. So again, we would either have to just delay or defer those projects and until we find a different funding source. That's a total in the 10-year CIP in these categories of about $168 million worth of projects that without additional authority would be on hold waiting for some funding source.
Mayor, Ms. Rios, what's the price tag on the Heroes Park Aquatics Facility?
Mayor, members of the council, we have a placeholder in the budget for $44.4 million for that project. It's just a very high level estimate.
Thank you.
So again, just to talk about what are some of the projects that are in there? We talked about the dollar amounts, but I already mentioned Heroes Recreation Center is about 44 million that we have waiting if we were to have bond authority. Soro Ranch Park improvements, there was a master plan for Soro Ranch Park. We would need bar, excuse me, we would need park bonds in order to complete that or we'd need to find another funding source. There are plans in there to improve the Foothills Skate Park and also Chaparral Park. Many of the parks around the city, we were able to do a lot of work on them with ARPA funds, but ARPA funds are gone now and all committed. And so we, you know, we don't have that as a funding source anymore. And so general obligation bonds is the the type of funding we would like to use for this if we were able to get that authority. Already mentioned under general.
I have a question real quick. On here, you show the estimated 60 million. The Recreation Center for Heroes Park is included in that, but that's not the aquatics. That's a separate.
We just call it that, we just call it the Recreation Center, but it is a it's scheduled for the master plan to be a recreation and aquatic.
Okay, so it's both, okay.
Mayor, is there any estimated projects for Parks and Rec in this 60 million in the Cactus District?
Mayor, members of the council, they're all over the city. I can't tell you which ones are in the Cactus District. The numbers are coming from the current budget book. And so I took those numbers from here. And then we'll be going through the budget process here and you'll see what other projects are being proposed for both parks. They're all over the city though, so I would assume there are some in Cactus District. We mentioned again, the operations campus. We would need general government authority for that. Flood control, the Outfall Channel was completed, but there's still storm water work that needs to be done along Bethany Home Road. And then we have projects programmed for improvements and remodeling of the main, all three. Well, three of the four libraries that are slated for library bonds, but we don't have enough authority to do those projects.
Mayor, I have a question. Ms. Rios, so the general government, the operations campus, but doesn't that include like fire stations? I know we've got a lot of other things in the CIP. We've got several fire stations to still up update. Wouldn't that fall under general government?
So mayor, members of the council, we have public safety bonds that passed in the bond, the past bond election to use for both fire stations. They could be used for their share of the operations campus. But it's more of a general government type of facility. And then we also have streets and transportation bonds that were. So we're, we didn't include those here because we have authority that we received in the last election in 2023.
And then mayor, if I could, on the library, I know we were told when when we debated the Velma Teague issue before it was decided to be demolished and then decided not to be demolished, that the the renovation of the Velma Teague Library was going to run around $17 million. But you've got two other libraries listed on here. Is the 25 or I guess 26 million dollars in this that we is in the CIP? Is that sufficient to cover all all three of those projects?
I I think the answer to that question is that's what we have budgeted for those projects. And we didn't have a budget in there for Velma Teague. We would have required some type of budget transfer had we decided to go ahead with that. And so is that 26 million enough? We'd have to get more details on that for me to answer that question for sure.
Okay.
That's what we have budgeted.
Okay, because I mean, I know that there hasn't been any major investments in I think either one of the other two libraries in the 10 years I've been here as far as, I mean, I know, you know, the same cooling units and all of that, at least on, I know for sure on Foothills. So I would, I would at least guess that nine and $9 million isn't enough to address even just the the basic issues on Maine and Foothills Library. I mean, that'll be a discussion for another day, but I just figured that that didn't seem like enough looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, I was looking back at Michelle. I think we have some projects underway to do some of the heating and cooling and some of that. But but you're you're right in the sense that sometimes we have these projects and we say we're renovating and we'll just use the main library as an example. But these renovations don't have an impact on the public in the way that you would think. It's because it's all done on infrastructure such as plumbing, heating, mechanical and that type of thing. And so for the user of the library, they're not seeing really the impact of that except that the library is still, for example, being, you know, is cool during the summer. These projects, if we were to get the authority from the voters, would change the appearance of the library. We'd be doing interior work, redoing some of the shelving, the flooring and all of the things that bring the library up to a more modern type of standard.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Rios.
Okay, so we thought we'd take just a minute to talk about the pros and cons of doing a special election. Again, the last time that we did obtain bond authority, new bond authority, it was done as a special election. This is not meant to be an all-inclusive list of everything pro and con about doing an off-cycle or a special election. It's just some of the things that that we know of on a very high level. So when you have a special election, voters tend to be more informed about the issue because there aren't as many issues on the ballot. We've seen other cities, including ourselves, have success with doing off-cycle or special elections. And by that, we mean they're not during the the general election. It's in an off-cycle year. During the general election, you have an impact of what we sometimes call voter fatigue, which is to say that you've got so many things on the ballot between the federal federal offices and then state offices and potentially state laws and and other types of things that by the time the voters get to their Glendale issue, they're just tired of voting. So we call that kind of voter fatigue. So those are some of the pros as you don't have as much of that because it's a shorter ballot. On the cons side, it's costly for the city. It will probably cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $250,000. You do have a much lower voter turnout because even though the voters tend to be more educated on the on the issues and come out to vote for that particular issue, overall voter turnout is usually lower on a special type of election. And in this particular case in 2025, we are hearing there may be school districts within the city of Glendale that didn't have bonds and or overrides passed in the last election who could also be on a special election in 2025. That just means that you have more than one issue and that people could be somewhat confused about what is the school issue versus what is the city issue. What we are proposing and asking for council consensus on is to begin mirroring what we did in the 2023 process. Council may recall and for those, the public and new council members, we did hire a public relations consultant. It was High Ground. We asked them to go out and poll our voters and do a statistically valid sampling to see what was their appetite for passing these bonds. Once we had that information, we brought that information back to council to tell them, you know, here's what's the public's appetite based on that information. And that's how we selected and chose to do transportation and public safety in 2023. We hired High Ground to do that. They're willing to do that. Again, we could bring an item forward to the council to approve a contract with them. We were also approached by a group called the Trust for Public Lands. What the Trust for Public Lands is a nonprofit that helps. Basically, their mission is to try to create more public open space. They are willing for no cost to follow the same type of process that High Ground did where they would go out, they would model, first of all, they would model what you need for bonds. And internally, we do some, we do that as well. But they could do the polling for us at no cost to determine what do people want in terms of park and recreation facilities and what resonates with the voters. The advantage, number one, again, is that it's no charge for that. And after the fact, if if a bond election goes forward, the Trust for Public Lands often also raises money to lobby for the passage of those bonds. So that's a service that they provide. And so we we sort of recommend if we're going to go forward that we use the Trust for Public Lands for the for the Parks and Recreation portion of the ballot if council chooses to do that. Again, the purpose of those consultants is to gauge the public sentiment so that we're not putting something in front of the public that we already know is likely to fail. We propose that we would use the dollar amounts based on the council adopted 10-year CIP, which you'll adopt here, you know, you have one now, you'll have updates to it going forward that you'll see through the budget process. We would do all of that, get all that research, bring those results back and to the council to let you know going forward or to have you make a decision going forward if you do want to put something on the ballot.
Mayor, I have a question. Ms. Rios, are so are you saying that we would use High Ground for the, one of the bonds and then Trust for Public Lands for the parks?
Yes, can you go back one maybe? One more. I guess one more. So when we look at the authority that we need, we have basically four different categories here that based on, again, based on councils adopted five-year and 10-year CIP, we don't have enough authority. Yes, Trust for Public Lands is particularly focused on Parks and Recreation. So we would use them to do that research and polling of the citizenry. And then we'd use High Ground to do the others. They're accustomed to working together and we already sort of vetted that out. And so they they think they can work together on the project.
Okay, thank you.
And so if council again today, we're kind of looking for a consensus, if you want us to keep moving forward and do those surveys and and kind of follow that process, the first thing that we would have to to do after that, after we come back to council with sort of those results would be to notify Maricopa County by May the 7th of our intention to hold a special election. And then there's a process for creating the publicity pamphlet and all of those kinds of things. With that, that concludes my presentation and I'm just looking again for consensus from the council if they want us to move forward with this process.
Mayor, thank you, mayor. Ms. Rios, so I don't remember, we, I think we're required to see the bond committee, is that correct? And that does that, did that happen in 2020 before or after we notified Maricopa County? I don't remember.
So mayor, members of the council, we are not required to have a bond committee. The bond committee terms all expired, just, excuse me, I think January 31st, either of this year or the prior year, I'm not 100% sure. If it's council's desire to have a bond committee, then we can bring that forward as well. It was a little, it was a little difficult, to be honest with you, with the bond committee, understanding what their role was to be because we had the. Because we had the consultant, we had the workshops with council, we had dollar amounts and projects coming from the 10-year CIP. There wasn't a lot of work for the bond committee to do. But if it's council's desire to have a bond committee, then we'll have to, you know, work with the clerk, reformulate it, get new people onto it and start that process.
Mayor, if I could, I, I think it's important to include citizens in the process. I think that's an important piece of the puzzle. Perhaps we could make sure they're a little better informed on the front end of exactly, you know, that there, there's already, so that they have an understanding that we have a CIP, we've identified projects, we've identified uses for the money so that they know that, and that they're, they're basically, what their actual task is, is to go onto the community and help convince the community that, to support the bonds. I think it's, I mean, I think that there, that's an important piece of the puzzle. That's what my opinion is. I think there was a lot of confusion last time and there was some, there was some, I don't, I don't know how to explain it. I think that they were a little bit confused on, on exactly what their task was. At least I know the person on my, my bond committee was. And they were, they were concerned about the process because it was a little bit rushed last time. This time, we're way out ahead of it. Last time, we were a little bit on a much tighter timeline. And I think they were, the concern, at least from the, my appointee on the bond committee, was that we were kind of rushing it and the concern was that they weren't going to pass.
So Mayor, members of the council, we're actually, we're actually started last time in December. And so we're, this is January, almost February. So this time, we are potentially more rushed than we were the, the last time, to be honest with you. And yes, I think if we are going to have a bond committee, they need to really understand their role because if they're, I think they felt like their role was to recommend projects, but the projects were already defined in the 10-year CIP by council. And the ordinance that formed the bond committee said to make recommendations based on the council's 10-year CIP. So you're already, we already have the projects, we already have all of that. So, and then if their role is to be in the community, sort of promoting the bonds, we can't use city resources to do that. And so they would have to go form their own resources or find their own resources to do that outside the city because we're not, by law, we're not allowed to use city resources, including a bond committee to lobby, to vote for those, in favor of those bonds or to vote against them, quite frankly.
Mayor, I have a question. Ms. Reos, so here it says that we have to notify Maricopa County by May the 7th. That's only about four months away. And you did say that we don't have a board committee, a bond committee right now, that it expired? So we'd have to go through and, and fill, create another bond committee? Is that what it is? How long does that take?
I guess I'd have to defer that question to Julie. I mean, their terms expired. So.
How many, how many members were on it?
I believe there were seven.
So we'd, we'd have to go, yeah, it sounds like we're kind of behind the ball on that.
Mr. Feld.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, I think Councilmember Tomachov brings up a good point is, I don't think we gave good, clear direction. So here would be my recommendation. If there's, if there's consensus in the council to begin this process, we could meet and maybe make some, have some meetings about what the council would want out of a bond committee. And then I think from there, we would figure out what's the best place to insert the bond committee in the process. So I think it starts really with what would you like to have the bond committee do on behalf of the council? We could have some discussions here in pretty short order, kind of tighten that down and then come back with a proposed schedule of when we would do that. I, I think that would be really a, a good idea because I think there was some lack of clarity for members of the bond committee the last time.
Mayor. We have our 10-year CIP. And unless we want to have the bond committee provide input to either add or subtract or rearrange that 10-year CIP, I think we know, I'm guessing we know what we want to at least poll on what are the, what's the public sentiment at this point for our 10-year CIP? And are they willing to, to bond for it? And I'm well aware of the division between the city as an entity and the city as a community, the community wanting to support a bond election or oppose it. Let's be positive and say support a bond election. That, to me, is where we need the most public help. And I agree with you, it was frustrating for my appointee as well, not being real clear what the bond committee, what we had thought it to be. But I really think that what we need the most is a bond committee that's, that believes in our, our 10-year CIP and, and whatever parts of it we decide to move forward with based on, on strategy and that they can take that ball and run with it and put their energy into that, taking the ball and running with it rather than trying to mishmash our CIP a little bit here and a little bit there. I think that would be the really frustrating part for them.
So Mayor, again, members of the council, it sounds like we may have a consensus to keep moving forward. And then if you want us to address the, the bond committee issue, we can have another separate workshop on, you know, kind of defining their, their role and, and how they would operate.
Well, let's clarify, make sure we do have a consensus to keep moving forward. Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
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 Okay, so we're, we're good there.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll meet with the city manager and I'll get some data on what other bond committees do and kind of how they're structured and then we'll come back with a workshop on that.
If, if we don't give them clear directions on what they need to be doing, then we shouldn't do it at all. So I'm hoping that, that we actually do that, give them clear direction.
Agreed, Mayor. I agree.
Okay. City managers' report.
No report today, sir.
City attorneys' report.
No report, thank you.
Uh, city council, special interest items. Mr. Baldenegger, have you any?
None at this time, sir.
Councilmember Conches, have you any?
None, Mayor.
Councilmember Guzman, have you any?
I'm sorry, no, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Turner?
Yes, Mayor, I do. I'm gonna, in the course of outlining this item of interest, I'm going to share a little bit of history. So I'll try not to go very long. But my item of interest has to do with what is known as the Glendale 16. On June 8th of 1959, a flatbed truck with wooden sides and a canvas top was transporting 48 field workers from a labor office in Mesa to an onion field in Tolleson. The bus only had one single exit at the back of the vehicle, bus, truck, one vehicle, one exit at the back of the vehicle. And once the men were loaded in the bus, their suitcases were piled in behind them, blocking the door from the inside. A 50-gallon water drum was roped to the rear corner of the door, opposite the door on the exterior. Directly behind the cab in the passenger section was a 35-gallon auxiliary gas tank. At approximately 4:30 in the morning, this vehicle drove off the road, crossed an irrigation ditch and struck a cottonwood tree near Central and Baseline Roads. The crash was described as the loudest clap of thunder ever. Investigators surmised that the fuel line connection to the 35-gallon surplus fuel tank broke and the bus was completely engulfed in flames. 30-gallon water drum broke loose and blocked the exit door from the outside and the suitcases were blocking the door from the inside. Scene was horrific. Screams erupted from the vehicle as the men tried to claw their way over the suitcases and out of the inferno. 32 men covered in blood, their bodies on fire, bones broken, exited the vehicle. The driver and 16 Mexican workmen burned to death in the inferno. The U.S. Secretary of Labor ordered an immediate, complete investigation. And in June 1960, the U.S. Department of Labor announced a series of tighter safety regulations and long-needed changes for farm contractors as a direct result of this deadly accident. There are 16 graves in Glendale Memorial Cemetery because the good citizens of Glendale offered a final resting place when these men could not be returned to their families in their homeland. The gravesite service was held on a hot summer day with over 1,200 mourners. At the time of the burial, the city did not own Glendale Memorial Cemetery, but we do now. The headstones and memorial are falling into disrepair and the impact of this horrible accident had on the lives of men and their families as well as field workers throughout the country is at risk of being forgotten. So it's my request that the city of Glendale work with the Glendale Historical Society and interested community members and anyone else to develop a plan so that the graves can be properly honored and the significance of this terrible accident will continue to be remembered.
Okay, that's your item. All right. Vice Mayor?
Nothing today, Mayor.
You and I have nothing. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
I have nothing either, Mayor.
Oops.
Hey, Ray. We're just wanting to make sure you're still awake. Okay. So I do have a motion from the Vice Mayor. Who was the second?
Second.
Okay, very good. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay.
Aye.
Here's your eyes have, do have, that motion carries. Council meeting is recessed.